... sixty thousand, at six p.m. is now called to order. Members present on the Court, Charles McCann President, Charles Evans Commission, Tom Straney Junior Commission. First thing on the agenda is the motion to bring the matter to the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting will be scheduled on September fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, at ten a.m.
Sir.
The motion is seconded, being all yes, but motion carries.
And John Byrd's not counting. May they all hager?
Yes. I have the same.
You just do whatever you want.
I've come about the restrooms. The handicap, some of you know can't get upstairs if the elevator's not working, and I was wondering why you're going away with the bathrooms downstairs.
Well, the handicap has always been upstair, that's because of space. The ones downstairs could not meet the requirements of space to remodel them or anything, so when we had to do that a few years back, it was suggested that people who did the inspection, we'd move it upstairs. The point you make is certainly valid, that the elevator's not working, certainly an issue. I guess the only way we would be able to compensate for that, some offices, three offices on the main floor, do have restroom facilities, they're just not the handicap accessible completely, but the reason it was done was to accommodate, stuck here where we gave this space to the family law court, we had to improvise, take part of Donald's record room to make offices for the new family law, and I think rightly so, the staff of the family court system did not feel secure, safe, whatever, having restrooms that was open to the public. So, we were requested to consider making those restrooms limited, so that the people who worked for the court, including the judge, would have a somewhat private bathroom. That's why we had to do that.
So you closed both of them down, you can't leave one open for handicap?
No. Me and Amy Williams talked about it, we talked about that, having intercept type of bathrooms, but we decided against that because of the request of the judge, basically, because he needed, I mean, he has a job that not everyone can handle and deal with, all the family issues, and as we listened to him and talked about how we might accommodate him, I think the decision was correct in providing him a secure space when he wants to go to the restroom, and he's realized it's a disadvantage to when we have meetings or anything else, but I guess we have resolved it, we, you know, just had to make a decision, so we're trying to work through that, I mean, we are looking at additional space, trying to, we made an offer on the property, trying to find another space for that family law system. Once we can find that space, then we will open it back up. It's not one of the things that we really want to do, it's just one of the things that we felt, we didn't have too many options.
Don't they have fundings for extra bathrooms and stuff for grants?
No, no, there's no funding at all, and even...
I mean, at Altrista.
No, no, there's nothing, I mean, they just told us, you've got a judge, you've got three employees, now provide them space. We gave them our space here, and took these election space next door, put it over there in the garage, and then took half of Donald's record room and put three offices in there, because they didn't have any choice, got to provide the space. And it's a needed, you know, thing, it's just terrible, the situation that families are in this day and time, far as all the issues that come in here every day, but, and the judge does a super job, but having adequate space is, it's not there, but it's working, but it's still not adequate. I mean, they do, they did write specifications, I don't know whether the legislature or whom did, but there's specifications on the size of offices and things like that, and we do not meet those fully, but we meet them enough to get by, and if the judge complained, we'd be in a real pickle trying to meet the requirements, because he could, he could just say, I'm not happy with this, and you're going to do something better.
Okay, well, if the elevators don't work, and they're right, and they can't get up the steps, why are they supposed to do that?
Well, if they asked, there'd be somebody to let them come into the restroom across the hall, the secretary, Caesar's office has a restroom, Mr. Whitten's office has a restroom, and the sheriff's office, that's the only offices in the down floor that has a restroom.
Okay, if I call OSHA, and they tell me that you're all supposed to provide bathrooms downstairs in, then I can come back to the next meeting and sign it?
I don't know about that.
Well, I can come to the next meeting, can't I?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't know about that.
So you're going to tell me what they told me?
You're always welcome to come to every meeting.
But if that lady at Altrista told me I had to pay my name on the list?
Well, in order for us to take action, that's true, but you can always come and speak under public, you know, form, that we just can't act on at that meeting, but we'll listen. You can always, you know, the meeting's open to in, we always give that invitation.
Well, I'll go OSHA and I'll see what they do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is Bill Curry with the Cold River Group.
Welcome, Mr. Curry.
Thank you.
Wow.
It's good to be here. I don't want to say anything until I tell you all how much the Cold River Group, Watershed Group, appreciates Lincoln County. We started seven years ago, and the county provided us the first cash donation we ever got outside. Now we build a river center, a water trail, we're cleaning up the river and things going, and we just appreciate the support.
We're glad we were involved in it to get going, because you guys have done a super job.
Well, thank you, thank you. And the reason I'm here tonight, I think you have a copy of a letter, if you don't, I have copies here.
I've seen, yes.
I also have some pictures. What we're proposing...
Just for the public, say, you go ahead and share the information, this is the public's information.
Okay. What we're proposing, there's a...
And you can come up here if you want.
Okay. I don't have great visual aids, but the Cold River Watershed, the Cold River Wahandi Water Trail, which is a very active recreational activity going on in Lincoln, Boone, Canola Counties right now, has need of further access to the river, and one of the access points that, and I'm sorry, I brought Bill Simmons with us, and Bill Simmons owns the Cold River kayak and canoe rental business, which has been extremely active, and we estimated there's probably three thousand people have been on that river this year on the water trail. And to keep that momentum going, there are several of the water, the boat launch areas that we list on our, let me look at the brochure, that we list on our trail guide, and this trail guide is located, by the way, there's fifteen thousand of these in every, every visitor center in the state of West Virginia, and it, what it does, and I've got one for anybody that wants it, and they're also over at the Hattville McCoy Trail, but what this map shows is outsiders, people not familiar with the area, where to go, where to launch your boat, how many miles you need to float down until the next launch. Well, we have a real difficult time right now with one particular launch, it's in Lincoln County, and that's located at the junction of Little Cold River Road and Quarter G, I call it Blue Tom Road, but underneath the bridges, there's an existing site where you can put a boat in, but as Bill will attest, it's about a twenty-foot straight drop down to the river, so if you end up at that location, you've got to drag your boat up, twenty foot up straight upside a hill. What we drafted a letter for the county commission to review, and for the DNR to review, is a letter that says, is addressed to Department of Highways, and it says, Department of Highways, we'd like to discuss leasing, long-term, the six or seven acres below the Quarter G Bridge, and this was at one time, Lincoln County was involved in looking at building a park there. My role is to urge you all to encourage me to go ahead and get the Department of Highways to look at leasing that land to you. Once you receive that land, or before then, the DNR is ready to lease from the Department of Highways, a smaller portion so that they can build a new put-in for boat launches in that area, but it's kind of the entryway to Lincoln County in a lot of ways. I would like, I've taken it this far, I want to get out of the center of it as much as I can, but I'd like to see you all get that lease and have control of that property, and eventually that could be a recreation center, a camping center, there's a lot of visitors coming to that area.
I mean, we met there a few years back and looked at that, I think Dr. Basens there, maybe Jeff Albert.
We've been trying to find who did the plans, there's some, still up, from the time they opened Quarter G up, there's a picture of a park that was planned to be built there.
Right.
I had no idea.
You might check with the EDA, they may have a copy of that there, I'm not sure, but I think that there might be.
Yeah, Shelley Hudson was involved with that.
Yeah, Shelley was involved that time. Well, the thing, you know, the thing I need from the commission basically is your support. There's, there'll be a cost with the lease, it'll be nominal, I'm guessing three or four hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, I was thinking, I just, when I read the letter and all that, I never get around to talking to anybody at EDA, but we were actually, through either EDA or the commission one, had actually at one point had a lease on it, paying an annual fee.
Nobody has record, the Department of Highways people say they don't have a record of it, and I don't know where it went to, so what they say is, Bill, you need to start all over.
Okay.
So, with your all's support, and I mean, if I have a contact, you all could give me somebody that I can...
He's a high-tech man.
By the way, my phone's ringing, and that's why I have this hearing aid, I can hear you. Okay, what else do you want to do, so we're there? Now, but anyway, that's where we need, is your all's...
So you think we just try to start over, rather than try to dig up any files?
And the Department of Highways, I think, is very supportive of the project.
Well, I would think that we will certainly give you our support and work to get that accomplished. Now, tell me again, you think it needs to be a lease in the name of the county commission? Is that what, or they wanted it...
Well, whatever you're into, you may want to lease it in the name of your county development authority.
A.D.A.?
Yeah, that's probably...
But with the understanding, there's an agreement we're going to sign, or something where the...
And see, the Cold River Group won't be involved in any of the lease forms or assignment, it'll be between you and the Department of Highways, but in addition, at that location, the DNR will lease the area they need to build the boat launch.
Well, I guess that's the thing, I was concerned too about liability.
Right. Well, while that's important, the DNR, you can't sue the DNR, they have the toughest restrictive regulations about being sued, so if they own the lease on that area where we're launching boats and taking them out, you guys are protected.
So, in order for us to, the next step, who do we need to contact?
If, what, the next step would be, with your all's verbal permission, or however you want to do it...
We'll take a vote here in a minute.
Okay, I would, what I'd do is send that letter out that I drafted.
Okay.
And that'll start the wheels turning, and I need a contact person from Lincoln County that can work with the department, I'm just kind of coordinating.
Right, I understand. You've done a good job down through the years.
Well, doing my best, I'm getting older though, I've got to get this stuff done. But yeah, if I've got that person, I'll put them with DOA, I'll put the DNR people with the DOA, and you all should get a...
You'll sort of be our coordinator, you can get out of here.
Yeah, I'll do that, and I've got Simmons over here to help me, he'll sit in and help work too.
Well, he might get a little workout mic there, I don't know.
Yeah, no, he's my go-to guy now, he always has.
I think EDA still would be the best place to do it.
Now, who is the director of the...
Larry Stutler. Larry Stutler, we will, we will make that contact and let him know what's going on, what he needs to do, give your name, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Because I think they did have the lease agreement open there.
It had to be under lease.
Yeah.
But that's been seven, eight years ago.
They don't...
Yeah, maybe a little bit more now.
But they can't find any record of it, the highway?
I'll go ahead and...
Yeah, we had a little ceremony, yeah, I'm waiting.
I have a motion, we give what support we can to any, or the letter, whatever, to get this statement here in there.
Oh, second motion.
The motion is seconded, to work with Mr. Curry on his request, in order to get this property under lease, DNR advantage, all yes, but motion carries. We appreciate still the work that you're doing, because it is a great piece of water over there, definitely a lot of traffic.
Well, we're real proud of everything that's...
We must start working on the Geyser Dock too.
Yeah, we...
The Geyser Dock's ready, I've offered to help the Geyser Dock Watershed, if they want to do a water trail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is Percy Sims.
Thank you. I feel kind of like a broken record, but you know, when you get older and you get physical, but, you know, I've been coming since two thousand and eight, addressing this same issue with the districts, so today I was with the Senate, I was with the Secretary of State, I was with the Governor's Office, I was with everybody, so we have, I find it very strange that when this process was started, that we didn't use the legal map that was submitted to the county with all eight districts, we chose to use an altered map. So, gentlemen, I know that we need to do what's right for Lincoln County, but this whole process was predicated on less than legal districts, so we really need to go back and represent what the people of Lincoln County want, what's true and fair for Lincoln County, because here is, people wanted to see where these proposed districts were going to be, but nobody could provide them with a map, under all the FOIA requests that I had made for voting district maps and legal maps, that nobody could ever presume to me. So, recently got a letter from both the commission and the county clerk, saying that I could view them, they were too big to copy, so I go into Donald's office, probably a week, week and a half ago, nobody could find the maps, they went to the county commission office, they couldn't find the maps. Christie Skreggs said she'd never seen the maps, but the Senate, this illegal Lincoln County Voting District, two thousand and ten, it's all eight districts, so legally, we have a, our process should have been predicated from eight districts, not six, so from that, the process is flawed, we need to go back to the drawing board and make this a legal process and represent the people from Lincoln County, that is, that's all I ask. I want to work with the people, we need to pull Lincoln County back together and unite, not divide. So with that, I would like, I'd like a fair and honest process.
And you're entitled to request it.
Thank you.
I don't know who you're speaking for, Jake Nease. Do you know him?
No.
All right, guys, Percy's got the floor, she's through, and somebody else can call.
So the commission, nobody's interested in entertaining the thought of a motion to recognize the legal map for Lincoln County, which the districting process should have been predicated on.
I can't speak for my fellow commissioners, but I certainly have an opinion.
So, you think it was fine, Mr. McCann, to use a fraudulent map, when, you know, you validate...
No, 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 don't put any words in my mouth.
Okay, but you validated January the third, you're...
Don't put any words in my, I told you last time, go to the prosecutor if you've got a legal issue.
So, so to take this...
That's all, that's all.
We should take this to the prosecutor?
If you've got a legal problem, because you know where I stand, huh, six districts, now three, deal.
It was never six.
That's your opinion.
No, it's not opinion, sir, it's documented.
Go upstairs, or you can be seated.
I can, I'm capable of seating myself, and I will seat Mr. Prosecutor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next time, who's this?
Brittany Cal, Green Waste Water Project.
Welcome, Brittany.
Can you hold your back for a while?
I'm not going to.
I feel like I really, it doesn't matter, yeah.
Really? You expect to have it, right?
You guys stop sitting on the front, I don't know.
I want to give you a quick update, hopefully, on our project, where we are. This is the Waste Water Project the county has been working on since two thousand and five, that's when we got the money from the federal EPA, we're now in phase three, which is funded by the state government, by the DEP, and they get their money from the EPA. We wound up putting in twenty-four different homes with phase three, and if you look on the second page, there's a budget breakdown, we still have some money left. The important figures are the twenty-six thousand in contingency, which is number six, and the almost seven thousand in future change orders, which is number seven, so that's about thirty-three thousand dollars, and the thought is that thirty-three thousand dollars can put in at least one additional system. So, where we are in that process is, we're trying to move toward phase four, which would put in more systems, but we're using the list of people who are on phase four to try to figure out maybe one or two or three of those homes which we consider for using that additional money. You remember that our contractors, the Wiseman's, a couple times when we had to do change orders, they were pretty exorbitant in how much money we wanted to charge us, so I met with them on the twenty-sixth to talk about this process, their suggestion was that we just tell us how much money you've got, and we'll be glad to put in a system for it, that didn't seem to be the best way to proceed, so what, what we're going to ask them to do is, we're going to give them three or four homes, and ask them to go out and give us a price on each of those homes, and then we need that to figure out which home or homes we ought to do. The other thing that might play into it, it's my understanding that the DEP and some of their other projects that they funded this round, has money that the projects haven't been able to spend, so they've sort of put out a feeler to us, if they have some extra money, can we find some ways to do some more homes, so I think they probably can, but I think the issue's going to be how well we can work with Wiseman Excavating to do this without it turning into something where they're trying to gouge us. And the hope is that we can get this process figured out and underway and approved by everybody before the end of this calendar year, so I'll probably be coming back to you in the next couple of meetings with some suggestions of some homes that we might do and some information about how much money the DEP might be able to grant us in addition to what these guys come up with. Couple other things, there is a, the third page there has some tributary sampling, one of the things we do to see if these systems are working right, we've got eleven points in the Left Fork Watershed where we go and we take a sample out of the creek, and we measure, we don't put a lab in Taze Valley, measured it to see how, what the E. coli level is in these creeks, but we're aiming for is less than two hundred colonies per hundred milliliter bottle of E. coli bacteria in the creek, and there have been some places in the Left Fork where we've had really good results, and those are the places where we put in multiple systems side by side by side by side. We've got other places where it's sort of shotgun, so you have a home here, and then you have three or four homes that don't have a system there, you've got another one, and what we're finding is, where we're able to put in several homes together, we're getting very good results in the creeks and strays when it comes to E. coli levels. It's not an exact science, because temperature and humidity and rainfall all play into how much E. coli you've got in the creeks. We weren't able to do any sampling from June until September because the creeks were so dry, you want to make sure you've got a flow, if you don't have a flow, it's not going to tell you what's really happening. So anyhow, we did a sampling on the thirteenth of September, if you look at that, it's pretty interesting that the top places on the chart all had less than two hundred colonies, that's one, two, three, four, five, six places where we put in, the ones toward the bottom had more, the ones toward the bottom are where there are more people are living, so you expect them to have, the one I'm a little concerned about is on Bar Camp, Bar Camp's a place where we now have ten homes in a row that have new systems in, and for a while, Bar Camp had, I don't know, I think we had seven times in a row, and it was less than two hundred colonies, and then all of a sudden, we had a three hundred reading, and we had a four hundred reading, and what we did after we got that reading is we went out and we started testing individual homes, and we found that one of the systems wasn't working right, we repaired that system, we've got another home where the system isn't working right, and my thought is that once all those homes are back working the way they're supposed to, hopefully, we're going to see the levels go down again. The other thing I wanted to take, have you take a look at, is number fifty-five, number fifty-five, for those of you who know the Left Fork Watershed, if you go down Baldur Road, where Dog Bone comes in and where Left Fork starts, you make a right, go down the Left Fork, there are three mobile homes there that are right in that bottom as soon as you start down Left Fork Road, and those three homes had an old aerator system that wasn't working, that was serving these three homes, so in that area had all this wastewater that was dumping into the Left Fork of the Mud River, so we started sampling that last December, and you can see the results were numbers like three thousand five hundred, three thousand fifty-five hundred, I'm sorry, I'm up one, five, fifty thousand, seventy-five hundred, forty thousand, two hundred thousand, so there were lots of E. coli drugs in that part of the creek. We fixed all three of those homes, we had a reading in May that was nine hundred and sixty, which is still not real good, but then the reading that we got in September had dropped down to three hundred and sixty, so again, the hope is that as we get these homes cleaned up, we're going to see some good things happen. We'll continue doing that, on that, we've got some rain coming, we should be able to take several samples before the end of the year. On the thirteenth of this month, we are doing a, we, the county, the county commission is sponsoring a wastewater summit at Chief Logan Conference Center, where we're bringing together people from the DEP and people from the DNR to sit down and talk about the project that we've done and what we're learning from it, and how it can apply to other rural, low-income communities, and that's one of the things we've learned in this project, is we're not unique, probably all Appalachia, where you have rural people who are low-income, who don't have any kind of decent septic systems, you're going to find the same problem. So, we want to sit down and talk about what we're learning and how, what we might do to change rules and regulations, one of the things that we want to talk about is how can we ensure that the people who are putting these systems in are well-trained so they know what they're doing, because you'll remember, we've had several instances where the people who install the systems have made mistakes, and we've gotten a deep problem because of that, the other thing is, we want to try to figure a better way so that people who maintain the systems are doing a good job and are well-trained. We want to talk about the fact that as we've got an older population, we're finding that as people are using heavy-duty medicinal antibiotic drugs, those drugs are impacting their septic systems, because their septic systems work because you've got good bacteria that's eaten the bad bacteria, but when you take antibiotics and you go to chemotherapy, that then puts all this heavy-duty stuff in the septic system that kills all the good bacteria, so it doesn't work right, so we're trying to figure out how to, what to do about it. It doesn't seem like, nationally, that people are looking at this, I don't know how we got into this, but we're into it now, and the last thing we want to talk about at this meeting is, are there ways to get people to do research on the systems that are going to do as well as what we're putting in, but cost less, and that's a big problem, because we're averaging around three, we're averaging twenty-six thousand dollars per system, that's a lot of money for... That's a lot of money for rural low-income people to have to deal with. Fortunately, all this is, we're getting it all from grants, so it's being paid for. But long-term, we can't do everybody's house in Lincoln County. We need to, it's going to cost a lot.
Well, it's like you said, the thing is, it's not just Lincoln County issue, it's a big problem, and it needs to be addressed. Some way to get a system that will work costs a whole lot of money.
So I'm not sure what'll happen. One of the things we're going to ask is that maybe phase four, if the state would be willing to put some seed money in to do research, maybe a hundred thousand dollars if we get some universities to do research in this. So we'll see what happens. Two other things I wanted to update you on that have to do, not with the Left Fork thing, that have to do with health things. You remember last November, the Youth and Prevention Coalition sponsored a attendance summit where we brought together people from different agencies, the school system, the court system, DHHR, to talk about what could we do to decrease the number of days that kids miss at school? That was pretty successful. We're going to hold in, on November fourth, the Lincoln County Drug Assembly, sort of model on the same thing, we're going to try to bring those agencies together again to talk about the epidemic we've got in Lincoln County with prescription drugs and how to resolve it. I'm sure I'll be bringing you more information about that. And the last thing I wanted to just put out, we, some of us had met earlier with Superintendent Lucas to talk about issues involving teen pregnancy, and one of the things we talked to her about was the concern that very often when a teenage girl gets pregnant, they may drop out of school immediately, or they may go on homeschooling, and then they don't come back to school. So we've got another dropout. We have probably linked to that, we've got a young mother who might not be getting services that she might need and might not be getting support for her child. So what we're working on is a pilot program that, we're not, we're not ready to take it to the superintendent, but we're looking at starting in January, if we can pull all this together, where we would do a half-day or a full day each month for two, two different groups. One group would be young women who are pregnant, and the other group would be young women who have had young children, who have babies. And what we do, what we'd like to do is provide health information to these groups, wellness checks, exams for the mothers, exams for the babies, agency services, like Rick can write from the start, we try to coordinate all those at the school. We're working now to identify other places that have model programs and program providers who could come in and do these things. And the hope is that within the next couple of months, we'd have something that's a little more detailed that we would take to the superintendent, and then of course she'd take to the Department of Education to see if we could try something and then measure the impact, especially to see if we could keep kids at school. Update you on all those things, and we'll, we'll keep bringing some.
I can tell that you don't have enough to do.
No, it's, well, don't send me anything for a little while.
Thanks, Rick.
Sure.
Can we ask a question? I know in, yeah, well, I know in other counties who have sanitation departments, if you dump raw sewage into a stream, you're fined. Does that occur here in Lincoln County?
I'm not sure you're going to find lots of counties where you're actually fined. You might find some counties where they might take them into the court system, but whether the court system, whether the magistrate's doing anything or not, I'm not sure.
I know, I work in different counties, and we've run across that issue. And I guess what I'm asking is, does Lincoln County sanitation department actually check these people who are draining raw sewage into the water system? And do they follow up on it too? Because I know other counties do, and come out and try to enforce the septic tank rules and laws and legislations.
What we're finding is that very few of the people, homes that we work with, actually dump in raw sewage straight from their toilets into the creek.
It goes into the ditch line usually.
Well, no. What goes into the ditch line, for the most part, is water from people's sinks and water from people's washing machines.
And sewers.
Well, what I'm saying is, what we've found in the five, six years that we've been working is, is that people who do have septic tanks, the septic tanks don't always work as well as they should. That seems to be the bigger problem. Where the leach fields were permitted back in the nineteen-sixties and nineteen-seventies, and the rules back then were not as strict as they are now. Now, you couldn't get permitted to do that kind of stuff. So it's people who had systems that were acceptable at one point, but now they're not meeting the needs of a growing population.
And my other question is, will this project eventually span, expand to other districts in the county?
I don't know if I'm the riffle, I'm not just saying, given the pace we're at now, but it just depends on the money.
Rick, maybe share how we got into this because of the Mud River water into the dam and meant.
It happened because in two thousand, no, in nineteen ninety-eight, the Left Fork of the Mud River Lake had this, it looked like a red algae bloom, and we couldn't figure out what caused it. And so we worked with WBU to bring faculty from WBU and students in. They couldn't figure out the red algae stuff, but they started doing tributary sampling in the Left Fork and found that we had a lot of E. coli content. And that drove the federal earmark that granted from the EPA the money for Lincoln County. So it's, the focus is there on the Left Fork. And the commission, as we move forward, has felt that we ought to try to clean that watershed up before we move any others. We've still probably got, we're over eighty homes now, there's probably two hundred and some in the Left Fork.
By having a dam there, it just creates a, a worse problem because if you've got flowing water, you're not going to have that much issues. You've got the impound water, and so we're just trying to help get that cleaned up better than what it has been. And of course, not just that part, we're also working with the mining industry, trying to get them to do a better job cleaning the water that goes in there.
I have a question for Rick. You mentioned the fact that as people get older, they take more medications.
Some people.
I mean, some people. And this has been, you know, it's an ongoing problem with the drugs, whether you're young or whether you're old. And there are come out of Dog Bone for Left Fork makes it right, is, is a drug-infested area, and probably more drugs go in and out of there than all the people down Left Fork. What about at Fly Creek now? Are there a lot of homes up there that are getting the system?
A lot of homes up Fly Creek do have systems. I'd say now, most of the homes on Fly Creek have a system. There's, there's still some that don't, but most of them do. And the thing about, you know, we don't know about the, there's not been any research about the impact of pharmaceuticals and stuff. I mean, we know it's going to have some.
Most of the things, most of the problems have better with antibiotics. There'll be ones that'll kill out the, what, the good bacteria in the systems and things like that. And from the studies I've seen, there's not much else other than some, some of the drugs that we take for some of the neurosensory problems that we, that we see, they'll cause problems with the bacteria. They don't cause them to die, it's causing them to mutate, things of that nature. But mostly with these systems, the problem we have, and I think are hard with, any, any microbial and any bacteria and like things.
Unfortunately, we, what we have, the good thing is that once people have stopped using all that, the compounds and stuff, the systems come back. But we don't know, we haven't been running long enough to know long from, you know, ten years, if every year, half of the people in the house get real sick and they're on amoxicillin for three months, what, does, will that mean that the system's not going to last?
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. Last thing on the agenda is Hartz Community Center.
I had a request on my phone, Amber was interested in trying to get a daycare back there, and I sort of advised her, I didn't think we should maybe get into that right now, we tried it before and it didn't work, and she's, of course, wants to do it herself. I suggested her put a written plan together and wait and see what happens. If we move from the site that we have now down to the present middle school, then we may look at the daycare there. We're not sure what else is going to happen, we're working with the school system.
McCorgo Community Center.
My, the only thing I have to report is, our meeting for tomorrow night has been canceled, but I did want to bring up the fact that, you know, I told Judy about the other night, about seven o'clock Tuesday evening, as we were getting ready to link the election, the fire line went off. And it just kept chirping and going off and on and off and on and off and on. And so finally, one of the fire workers went to the circuit breaker in the kitchen and just turned the whole thing off. And I explained that to Judy Tuesday night when I come over here, I just want to make sure that, you know, don't want the building to burn down, precious building that it is. But I didn't know if anyone had gone over there to take care of it.
I'm not sure either. I'm sure Judy's fallen.
Well, I did email Scott, and I emailed Lawrence Tuesday night when I got home to tell them. So I don't know if they've gone over there or not, I have not heard from them. I just wanted everybody to know.
Share, do you have anything to report on outreach?
Well, everything's the whole time, donations are coming in good, we've had all kinds of donations today. As a matter of fact, in Boone County, the Moore's Department of Community Center had a yard sale over the weekend, and they donated stuff to us today. Ponies, other people, we have to get them, get it. But we very appreciate it, and we want to thank the county commission, even though we haven't got them yet, thank you for the trek. Hopefully, we'll be here for long. And we have all kinds of rules and regulations on the walls and stuff. A lot of people don't read them, so we put them into our handbook, because I gave you all a copy. And since we've been giving them out, we started, and I know people are reading them, and who wants them now, we're going to ask for them.
Most people work with you. We appreciate you in the work with you guys.
We appreciate y'all.
New business, I need a motion to prove the bills are submitted for payment.
In motion, second, we've got to be in all yes votes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the acceleration orders are submitted by Tracy Dentis, S. R.
Second.
In motion, second, we've been all yes votes, motion carries.
Do you want to talk about the next thing that you?
Yeah, the next item I requested to be on the agenda. I was asked to attend a crime watch meeting in the Hartz area this Monday. And at the meeting, the primary concern that the people in that area have that do the outreach through the crime watch is that we don't have cell phone service in the Hartz area, which is the case in many parts of the county. And in that part of the county, like many other parts of the county, we've had an increased number of copper thieves stealing telephone lines. And so the crime watch feels that the thing the county commission needs to do at this point is continue to push cellphone companies to look at the area in a serious way when the copper thieves, we lose cell phone service at the clinics, the schools, the, the bank, just the pharmacy, and it's, it's a real problem. So over the last several weeks, the crime watch has put together a petition draft, and they're going to bring the petition to show the public, and they have collected over two thousand eight hundred signatures. And they ask that we, here at the commission, pass the resolution and send letters back to the cellphone companies and send a copy of the petition to each of those companies and ask them to come back to the Hartz area again and take a serious look at helping us to establish cellphone service in that area.
Please ring the motion to, not the resolution, is that fair?
So moved.
I'll say that.
Thomas?
Yes.
Are you all going to consider the Mans knob area as a possibility of the site since it's a power source?
I would assume the cellphone companies. I know that the commission, we passed a resolution once before, and then prior to me being elected and being on the commission, these commissioners met with cellphone company representatives that came out to the area. I'm not sure if Mans knob is one of the areas they looked at, but if they do decide to put a cellphone tower in the area, I'm sure they'll look at Mans knob and probably Hartland Coal, several different areas.
I think it has to be somewhere not too far away from the main highway is the issue. I think AT&T told us up there.
Yeah, that's the type, that's the reason they were excluding Mans knob when they looked at it, but.
Is that road miles or straight miles?
It was line miles, whatever line they, or whatever, it was something to do with the way they had it away from there.
Well, it would just help out too with Route thirty-seven, East and Lake.
They had a relay, I think, on Route thirty-seven, or they used to have down there. I don't know if they do now, but you know, we have the emergency tower up there with the lights on it to be rented.
And you've got thirty-seven, and you've got one in Hartz too, Jennings-Agnes probably, I don't know exactly where it is, but it's down closer to Route ten. Share.
I was going to wait on public comments to speak, but since Thomas brought this up, on the cellphone problems and all that up in there, the biggest problem I see right now is when the phones are out, people do not know how to get nine-one-one, for example, you know? And I maybe want to try to get on agenda, maybe next, on the twentieth there, but I'd like to see something happen, a plan maybe that was implemented when the phones go out that went into effect, that people would know where to go to, to get to a radio, whatever they need to hit an ambulance. And I don't know if that's.
Well, and Mr. Johnson's sitting here, I'm sure he can take that in, he is our representative too, emergency radio, so I'm sure he and Alan can talk about that. They may need something, but maybe it needs to be.
Well, I, I talked to Mr. Holden, and he said probably maybe bring that up here and see if we can maybe get something going. You know, if somebody's prepositioned somewhere or whatever, but the big thing is for people to know where that's at when, when the phones are out.
That's a good point.
You know, we've had, we've had multiple people come into the clinic, you know, our phone service has been out, we get in time and things like that, and they can't even call to see if we're there before they come. Then once they get there, and hopefully we're there, so we can take care of whatever's going on, but we don't have any way to get a hold of nine-one-one either, you know? I mean, so it's really, it's really a dangerous thing for these people.
It's a big issue, Doc, and my mom's got the light word, you know what that is, but they're useless without it. And she had a heart attack about three months ago and pushed it. The ambulance came, and they got there right on time. Now, had the phone system been out, she wouldn't be here today. And so my point is that, like the fire department up there, that maybe if that's a central point, that people know, hey, you can get over there, or you can at least call an ambulance.
Well, we've got a series of, like, I thought, sort along that line, I was thinking of the crime watch people who have radios, so that should be part of what you're talking about, I think. I was hearing there's some way we can do a network of getting that, getting that done.
Until we get cellphone service.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Cellphone service will take care of it.
Because, you know, like you said.
If, if they don't steal the copper.
Well, it just takes, you know, one person, just like you're saying, your mom there. This has happened already, you know? I mean, there's been people not made it because they've not been able to contact people. So, you know, this is not something you can really wait on. And I'm sure the commission, when we talk to these people, we're going to say, you know, we need cell service in these areas, because ultimately, that's the best way, because even if with the crime watch, you may not be able to get into somebody or get into a site that you're going to need, because you're talking about, most of these things we're talking about within an hour, they need to be dealt with. And if you're talking about an hour just to get a hold of somebody, then you're looking at another hour to get somebody to you. So these are, this is probably one of the most significant things we deal with emergency-wise in the county that needs taking care of and should be taken care of. And I'm, I'm sure if we could get one of these carriers to do that, they, they'd make money on it. They don't think they're going to make any money on us while they're not doing it. But we're looking at what, you know, what's, what's best for these people.
I went and talked to Armstrong people today, and they run that trunk line. So they told me they're in, something going on with Frontier. You know, they won't let them do drops and all this. Of course, nobody wants to steal fiber rock, you know? They're going to steal that. But, you know, that, that would, once they get that in, we'll probably take care of it.
This is also an economic issue because I talked to people from the low. This is also an economic issue because I talked to people from the Logan, Mango area that will go to Charleston to do business rather than going to Huntington because they avoid Route 10 since there's no cellphone service. So the gas stations and businesses along Route 10 in Lincoln County and the businesses in the Huntington area, they're suffering as a result of that.
Well, I can tell you that these stores, that 80% of their business is food stamps and the phones are out, you know. So, yeah.
Okay. We had a motion, Mr. Rainey second, Mr. Banks, to adopt this resolution in support of the cell service with the all yes vote. Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $250 to West Virginia Breast and Cervical Cancer Diagnostic and Treatment Fund for all women in Lincoln County whose lives have been inflicted with a disease.
And at 3:00 this Sunday, they'll have a walk at the primary care. So all invited. I personally, between my sister and my wife, I had some issues. And so I certainly feel the pain when they talk about these kind of things. Because it's just one of those things that people, this then time, just really have brought to the front, even with the NFL and all that, with their pink gloves and all that. I think it's a soft, nice way of letting people know what a serious problem we have. So do we have a motion for the money?
Second.
Motion and second. We got the all yes vote. Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a project amendment, change of scope for the fencing at the Lincoln County Fairgrounds. Governor's Community Participation Grant Program changing to the sewer project.
So moved.
Motion second. We got the all yes vote. Motion carries. That's what we agreed to back row.
We agreed to the contract assignment. I need a motion to approve an inner office budget revision in the office of the circuit clerk transferring $300 from training to travel as requested by Charles Runfield Clark.
So moved and second.
Motion, motion second, all yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Is anyone in the audience that's not on the agenda that would like to stick at this time?
So would it be appropriate to get on the agenda for the next meeting, if we can?
If you want that, we'll make note of that now.
To discuss this, could we possibly get Mr. Holder or?
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, where we could maybe come up with some type of starting point.
If we need to, we may want to have a meeting, get together before a...
That'd be great.
So we just talk about the issue and have it not resolved. So we'll work on that. With this petition, I'm trying to think through there. I heard Mr. Rainey talk about getting into the provider. But you know what might make an impact? If we could figure out who to take it to, the Public Service Commission, and present it to them and say, help us with this and talk about the issues and problems you all talked about. We might be able to do that and have some impact. It's all about money, but who wants to invest? AT&T's who looked at the site in Hartz and they went up there and talked very favorable, took pictures and no action. Yes.
You know, if the petition was put, I don't, how many petitions do we have?
2,800.
You know, if the petition was put on the county website, I guarantee you it would take 5,000 because it's a concern for everybody.
That may be the point taken.
Yeah, because there's not cell service throughout going out to 14 either.
Well, in Mud River Valley.
Branches and south.
It's a, it's a, only place it really has it really is, as you look at, the very eastern part of the county, then from Hammond to Huntington.
Anyone else? Gary. Gary?
On the Patfield-McCoy Trail, I asked the commissioner if you would consider having a public meeting at the Woodfield Fire Department and have a public meeting at McCorkle Community Center and let the community come in. And you all talk to them about your options about Patfield-McCoy and Ivy. A lot of it is to fear the unknown, to educate the community, watch what you've got in mind and stuff, and let them give their input on it. I appreciate if the commissioner would consider doing that.
Well, we'll give that information to Mr. Burton and see what he might want to do with Patfield-McCoy people.
I haven't said on that before. They usually like to have a good idea, you know, where the approvals are. And I think they've already mapped those things and what potential sites for trailheads would be. And then I think they like to have their public meetings then.
I think we come to three... I'm sorry. I said, I think they end up with three suggestions or something.
The trailhead itself is what's in question down there.
Right. And if you can write in the Lincoln Journal a couple of weeks and I think more happy, make sure everyone in the area knows it. Give the, you know, just give the people a chance to hear what your options are and let them express their opinions on it. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Excuse me. I wanted to add a comment to this thing. This weekend in Gilbert Trail Fest, which is going on, they're expecting over 2,000 actual riders from 40 different states. It's a big money-making event for Mango County.
I see that.
So that's it.
Yeah, I hope we get to that point here in Lincoln, McCorkle Park and the Hartz Park. We still want to, both parts of the county. Okay, now, Mr. Johnson?
I was just at the meetings in Canton Austin about all these towers and radio equipment stuff going through the state. There's about 200 towers supposed to be in, right now, in process of being put up all over the state. And it might be good if they would make a petition there to show that some of the cellphone people, that, you know, these people will buy into it.
I think it's what Thomas tried to say.
But there's, there's, all over the state's been going on right now. And they've got to make a big bunch of money for Homeland Security and all kinds of stuff. And this radios is all going digital. These scanners aren't going to be much count anymore after, after they go digital. But there's not a set date for that. But it's, it's a big push going on right now in the state for digital communications all over the place.
That's the meeting you and Alan went to.
Yeah. And, and we have a tower at Hartz now, and it's 380-foot tall. I think the elevation's over 1,300-foot, top of the tower. And, of course, Mans knob's a little higher. It's just right across from it, but still in a straight line. They put those towers that line aside. They're not very powerful radios. They put them at, they concede each other, one tower to the next, and they don't have to use a lot of power. The telephones is not very powerful, you know. They're not very big and powerful. And the repeaters aren't either. But it's well-needed all the way up the river, all the way up through there. It's well-needed.
It's definitely worth our time and effort.
I think they then want to make a petition up there and get a bunch of people sign it. And that way they could show, just like that one there, they could show the telephone company, you know, or the cellphone company, that they do have enough people to, you know, sign up for that and it'd be worth their while to do it.
And like I said, it's got a lot of impact, not just communication, affects businesses. Yes?
I have a fellow delegate that works for Frontier, and I'll ask him, he knows.
Yeah. They can tell us who to talk to, who to submit to, anything we can do.
I just met three new managers for Frontier. They were at Milton Rotary today, and they're in our whole area.
Yeah, Frontier's coming in bigger.
Yeah.
Some people say even better, so.
Well, several of them were former Verizon employees, so I'll agree to that as well.
Okay. There's no, appreciate it. Anyone else? I didn't see any. Please.
Okay, I'd like to just, well, number one, is the 911 director here with the doubt? Okay. When I'm looking at these magistrate, magisterial district needs and bounds, I notice that there's a lot of unnamed tributaries. In District One, there's unnamed, is mentioned 32 times. So on the seventh verse 16, unnamed tributaries. In the second district, there's, it's mentioned 48 times, and there's, so that would be 24 of them soon. And then in District Three, it's 28. So with all the new 911 mapping that has occurred, I'm just a little shocked that we have so many unnamed tributaries or unnamed areas on these verbal descriptions of those districts. And so was the 911 maps not given to the lady with the district?
No, what she used was the maps provided at the state level. She bought from the federal government, really.
Well, where did all this unnamed stuff come from? I guess it's where I'm...
Whatever. Her information comes from what she gets from the Census Bureau for her numbers. And then she just uses GIS, I believe, if I remember right, to apply this to the census blocks, to the maps that are already created. But what year they were done, you know, they may be two or three years old. I don't know. I didn't... But I did notice those unnamed and just was very common throughout, not just that one, all of them. That was roads are mostly streams.
Well, would that, wouldn't our 911 maps be better clarified for these descriptions? Because this is very confusing when you set down the rates.
Their focus, of course, Alan answered that completely, but their focus is on where do people live and trying to identify them for emergency response. And so if someone lives there and they assign a road name to it, then that goes on a map. But if no one lives there, then they don't worry about that, suppose. But that's, we can make...
Well, I mean, usually, like for big descriptions, it's a little more specific, what I read. I mean, maybe not all of them.
I don't, yeah, I understand that.
So, and then my other question is about the Hartz Water Project. I know it's coming.
Which one?
The Trough Fork one. But, you know, the people's been put off three, four times. It's going to come in July, then it's August, then September. So I guess what I'm asking is, have you all heard a definite time that it is coming from Mans knob to Trough Fork?
No, they just tell us it will happen. Of course, Logan PSD is, we're providing the money and they're doing the labor and the materials and things. It's a self-help project. That was not part of the vid, the vid stump hackway up the mountain. But the rest of it's self-help. It goes up to the left and out to the right. So, and all the way to Trough Fork. And Trough Fork was the last thing agreed to. It is agreed to be done, as well as Big Edmond. It hasn't been done yet either. They're coming two miles down Big Edmond.
And if I'm not wrong, we've already funded those projects. So Logan PSD already has the money from us.
They're waiting on their actions.
Yes, fully funded.
So we can call...
Oh, yeah. They'll be glad to talk to you about it. Because they, it's just one of those things. They're behind.
Okay. Okay. The other thing I wanted to mention is the lack of police support we have in the Hartz area. Here is a good example. I pulled in at the mouth of the holler the other night to get gas, looked over, see somebody creeping around the school with a baseball bat. Call 911. Nobody comes. The other day, like a couple of days prior to that, the same incident occurred. The principal from the school called. The person that owns the store called, and we got no response. It's, it usually, I mean, I'm hearing almost on a weekly, you know, every other day basis, that we call for police support and we get, nobody comes to see what's happened. Somebody's been robbed. The only time anybody comes, the police, has been somebody shot. So it's just the people of Hartz want more, better police protection. And we don't see begin it up there. So, and this, I mean, I didn't know if they were going to break into the school or not, but I did see a baseball bat and somebody sneaking around the school. So, me and four other witnesses, so. So that brings up my next question. What is the future plans for the old Atinsville, now known as the Hartz Primary School?
We got two school board members here. They may want to answer that question. That's not our call.
Okay. School board.
I'm just telling you, kidding.
That would certainly be such a little address, but we've not had any discussion.
No discussion, yeah. Okay. People just been asking. That's why I wanted to ask.
Yeah, but it's coming soon. I'm just really kidding. It's really a group decision. These guys can't make it anywhere.
Who makes the decision?
Well, I mean, the board, once they convene as a board, then they and the superintendent will make it.
The board president makes the decision what to do with the building and how to handle it. But does the county commission own the building?
No, we are going to ask to talk with them when that point comes, see what they, if they want us to be involved anyway. Because at one point, prior to Ms. Lucas, the superintendent did talk to us in terms of wanting to know if the county commission would be interested in the, particularly the middle school properties where the gymnasium is and things. And we told them we would at the right time when it came. But we haven't really spoken with Ms. Lucas about that. And the ferals board, we have a community center still. I think the way they needed to, the county commission, they needed that to us unless they needed it for school purposes, then that nullified the agreement we had, so.
Is that a lifetime?
I don't know what it said. Might be my lifetime. They just said to, if they need it, they don't need it, then it's there. But that needs to be brought back on the table because we've talked a little bit here that if the school board is interested in us considering, looking, and see how expensive it would be to have a community center at a middle school building, then we would want to, you know, talk debt, what's the cost to operate that and all those kind of things. I mean, we don't want to lose that gymnasium out of the building. We don't want to lose the building. Taxpayers just pay so much to operate these things that the school board is aware of. I mean, they'd probably like to keep it open themselves if money wasn't issued and have events there, maybe whatever. We're going to talk to them about it, at least ask to be at the table.
Since water was brought in, are there any, do you have any additional grants or new grants for the expansion of water service?
Well, actually, we don't, we're more the banker in these things, really. The PSD has to look at what their needs are and request the money. The, as far as I know, if, are you talking about West Town or are you talking about Branson, Mid-Kin?
I'm just talking in general.
Okay. I thought maybe you were talking about particular. Basically, the PSDs are the people who are the water providers. And the county commission's role is to support that. And we do that by being really the banker for this money that comes in. And most of the time, particularly federal money, we have to account for all that BRS and everything. So we basically are paying the bills out to where it'd be, whatever contractors.
Who applies to that?
The PSDs.
The PSD applies directly to the government?
Yes. Some states, they have a process. Of course, some of it's federal money in some states, but more federal, but less federal this day. But they basically go through a process, through the water board up our mic can tell you all about it. He's a PSD, that Lincoln PSD. You want to give them a quick version of what your role is then?
I'll give you the Reader's Digest version. It's that most generally, when you hire the engineer, they have a grant. They go toward the grant.
You tell them what areas, right?
Yes. The board of directors will, and the manager will direct these folks in which areas they want to go. The engineers themselves are permitted with different types of loans, the different types of grants, go to a feasibility study. What we've tried to do is to keep at least two or three projects in our line. Because when money comes up, money is very tight right now. But when money comes up, they like for it to be shovel-ready. And we've been able to do that. So that's the biggest thing, is that the board, the Public Service District is ready to proceed with the job. That's the biggest thing.
So each PSD is actually either granted or not granted the money. And if they're granted, then the money comes through the commission?
Some of it.
Not all the time.
Right. But I mean, in general, that's the operation.
Eric, we've got an obligation to help look after the money. And if it's, like small cities block grants, they get, it comes to us. Some of the ARC money comes to us. But the USDA money is, does not.
One thing that we, that we do is that the different lenders and the grant people like to look at, if you're able to pay it back and have serious charge by water route. The county commission has given us seed money, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get those cars in charge and get those credit cards.
And they, the other leg that we do is, since we've been able to have coal severance money, we do budget every year of money for coal severance, out of coal severance, two water projects. And basically, our coal severance is, probably half of it is jail bill, 400 and some thousand. And basically, our coal severance is, probably half of it is jail bill, four hundred and some thousand dollars, and then the other rest of it is pretty much water projects. And we go to each of the PSDs, where it'd be Logan or town of West Ham or Lincoln, and basically say, you have any projects that you can do for our self-help type things? And we're willing to at least give you fifty thousand dollars to buy pipe with, whatever, in some cases a hundred thousand dollars. And we do that regularly, then also, just like now, we're trying to get water project down Bullser, all the way to Mud River Valley. And we have obligated two hundred thousand dollars to try to help them, and they are actually spending the money now, this is through Lincoln PSD, hiring the engineers, getting to what it takes to cost the project. And we're paying that soft cost right now, just trying to help them get, go on the cost. It, we just, we believe that water is the most important thing we can do as far as community-wide, more important than cell phones. You've got to be healthy before you can even call the phone. But we just think that if we can help get a water through ten customers, it's worth the money to us. So we just, every, every year if we sit down and do the budget, we put money into our water projects, though, and, and we certainly spend it. Michael, where he goes around with his handout, if somebody, other PSD doesn't spend theirs, he all the time will know, if they didn't spend theirs for June thirtieth, could I have it? And a couple of times we've done that, but he's always asking.
Has, has something looked a break on a ten-mile project? I mean?
No, they've, they've awarded me a Tifanco, and it has to be like a, I think it's a ninety-day period to make sure that everybody's got their dust in line, and then they're ready to go. That should be closing here soon, I mean, ready to go, but it's.
Yeah, I was up there last week, the Branch McKee PSD talked to the chairman, what a few problems we were having on some of the off-lines up there. But everything looks, looks like it ought to go, and I was telling Mr. McCann a long ago, we need to make sure they don't drag their feet just because they got one person off on a sideline that they can't get it to, or something like that. That was one of the things I said.
Well, we're probably within ninety days of saying something.
I'd say FAMCO will start working for, this end of this year, before December probably, but how, when they get the water, I'm not sure.
Oh, well, yeah.
But the, they have had the contract now, been awarded probably forty days or so, they're wide. Anyone else? Probably?
I think mission concerns. Mr. Vance?
I, I brought up the only thing that I was concerned about, and that was the ten-mile project that I was checking on, things of that nature. I have also talked to some people in Harts concerning the piney project. Mr. McCann assures me that's already been funded, things of that nature, maybe concerned about when it might be going up there and things of that nature. Which, same answer I gave before, Logan PSD is doing it, they're doing it at their time, and we just basically have a way to move it through. But that is, that's all I have.
Before I do my report, I just wanted to touch on one thing. The, the roads, sewer, public water, all of those infrastructural problems that we care so much about, what is happening in Washington DC right now with the climate of the partisan battling and trying to cut the budgets? What that means for people like us is we have less water money, as you know. The roads deteriorate, education funding's cuts. Just think that as you, as you watch what happens in Washington, realize that it does trickle down to impact you and your daily lives. On September the fifteenth, after the last commission meeting, I attended the Route Ten Coalition meeting here in this room. On the sixteenth, I attended the mandatory public test of the election machines, just to make sure they were working properly for the election. On Saturday, I attended the redistricting meeting. From the nineteenth to the twenty-first, I was in Canadian Valley for the South Westford Action, Action Council Getaway. And I'm a new member of that board, but every two years, they take the board members away so they can tell us about their programs and meet the staff and look at the budgets so that we know that the operation's working efficiently. And the director, who is one of Lincoln County's own, Dwight Coburn, is doing an excellent job. On the twenty-sixth, I attended the election training here in this room for the Laurel Hill District. On the twenty-seventh, I traveled to Bridgeport to attend the West Virginia County's Risk Pool Annual Meeting, just to get an update on how we're doing statewide with the Risk Pool, and premiums are going to stay the same, and how the state, not only West Virginia, but also Virginia, some of their counties are involved with the Risk Pool, just to make sure it's stable. Twenty-seventh that evening, I came back and attended the Harts election training in this room. On the third was when I went to the Harts Crime Watch meeting, where they gave the petition to me. And at that meeting, I was asked a question that, the question sparked some concern in me, because it's, it's a question, it's a concern I've had brought up over the last several weeks. And that is, kind of goes back to what Lisa was talking about with police protection and, and the drug problem in Lincoln County. And I was asked, are people that are violating the law and people that are on drugs, are they not being arrested because the county commission has not paid the regional jail bill? So that's something that's out all across the county, is that people just aren't being arrested because we haven't paid our bills. And I just wanted to make sure that it was publicly stated here, that is not true. Lincoln County has always paid the regional jail bill. As it was stated earlier, we take some of the coal severance money, put that aside immediately to make sure that we're all always paid in full. And I don't remember the exact amount, but about two weeks ago, I think it was a forty-four thousand dollar amount that we paid. So if you hear that rumor.
It's for one month.
Forty-four thousand.
That was a high one, you just thirty, everybody.
So just, if you hear that rumor, make sure they understand that that is not a case at all, that the county is always up to date with the regional jail bill. And election evening, I came over to sit through some of the precinct returns and just wanted to witness Donald's staff and the good job they do. Appreciate all the work they put in this election, that's all I have.
Basically, most of our similar to Thomas, on the Route Ten, we did have a meeting here. And Route Ten, people have, the state, DOH have been very good to work with. They did ask us to see if we could get, get things going and get more involvement from Campbell County. Because at one time they did, and we sure, we tried to do that, maybe the next meeting, I remember Dr. Vance was out of town then, we told them that we'd try to maybe have the next meeting in Campbell County, because we used to do that some, so, we may go back to that. Of course, we did have the election test across the street. We had an EMS meeting, myself and the board of EMS, we had that meeting last Friday, before, before I took a week off. And then yesterday, we presented a bus on behalf of Lincoln County Commission and the Logan County Commission. Each of us came up with fifteen hundred dollars some time ago, and bought a decent bus that was in, that they'd taken off the road from Tri River, and we donated, donated that to the Logan Lincoln Veteran Vets. And two of, three of them came yesterday and accepted the keys to the bus. And I think Sean will probably have a story in there sometime next week or whatever. But they were very grateful, and they basically, I think, we invited them to eat with them. Next time they have a feast, it's at Hen Lawson, an old school up there. But they, that's their center, and they take a lot of pride in, in doing things for vets. This bus will be used to help transport vets to the medical area, particularly veterans' center. That's all I have.
I do have one concern that I did not bring up. And it, since we have school board members here in the audience, I'm sure there'll be a concern of theirs as well. The new school is almost complete in Harts, and I guess we're looking at, within the next sixty or ninety days, we're going to be moving into the building. And at the Route Ten Coalition meeting, we were able to talk about trying to get the curb taken out in front of the school. And it was indicated at that meeting that the curb would be moved. However, I'm not sure what's happened, but some of the curb was moved up to the point where it's the blind part of the curb. And I, I think that we'd be remiss if we did not investigate and do whatever it takes to make sure the rest of that curb is moved, because if it's not, it's a matter of time when that school opens that a child or a car or a school bus is involved in an accident.
You think we should send a letter to the superintendent, just that Donald can do the messaging? As long as they don't kill the message.
Because what's been done so far, it did help the line of view, but it does not help when you get into the curb where the cars are going to be turning into the school.
We can break them.
And I don't know if it's something we can do jointly to go back to the state and ask that they address this problem, but it needs to be addressed by the unit.
Lisa?
Um, chuckle other concerns since the board members are here. Lack of playground space, lack of parking.
At the new school?
Yeah. Everybody's big thing is to go teach our kids how to swim the river and fish.
Lot of, lot of building there and not much space.
And, oh, the other thing that's the river in Harts is the gymnasium is four feet or six feet too short. It's not the actual size of a proper gymnasium.
You mean in the new school?
At the new school, yeah. I'm not sure that's what.
I'm what the regs are for middle school, I'm sure it's not high school at the moment.
So this, somebody needs to check into that.
A little announcement, we talked last time about having something for our volunteers. And if you noticed the tent when you came in over here, what we decided to do was to show appreciation for all the employees at the courthouse. Tomorrow, we're having a luncheon, a barbecue. And then at two o'clock Saturday, all the people who volunteered for, thanks for the commission, whether, you know, be it the Parks and Rec, or it could be Crime Watch, all those things, all those people, we've invited them to come tomorrow and basically, you know, have the barbecue, and we've got some certificates to give out and some words of appreciation, and a little bit of money to give to each of the three crime watches, so, that's tomorrow. Luncheon Saturday at two o'clock, both of them at the tent. Mr. Johnson, do you have something else?
Uh, we just issued, I think, five more radios for, uh, up at Ranger. About, what, two weeks ago, or three? So.
For the crime watch?
If anybody's, if any of those people that you know up there, you know, crime watch people, they should, most, about all of them should have radios now. If electric was off, they should be able to get in with a repeater from up there with those new radios. So, might tell people that, but I don't know what to, we can have some kind of meeting on that, and if you want to do.
I'll get from Alan, then we'll go from there, see if he thinks.
You gotta get Alan and get everybody together up there and see what you want to do. But if we don't get those towers, I don't know what we're going to do.
Yeah, yeah.
We have digital radios as well, Public Service District, and we've used them several times for exactly what you're talking about, for emergency situations. And if anyone in the Allen Creek area has a problem, you see our trucks around.
You know, I don't think it'd be a big thing to fix, it's just, you know, some people like to sit down and put together a plan and say, and then get that plan out to the people.
Yeah.
People need to know where to go.
Anything else? Good as a question? Is it good?
About four or five years ago, I gave money to purchase a brick to the Lincoln County Parks and Recreation Department for the Ranger Park. And did that project ever come through a shield?
I've got benches all up yet, so. Just going to have benches for that.
You were doing benches before bricks?
Well, I'm not, I'm not doing, was trying to get volunteers to help do them. I've done what I can do on the labor part. If I can't get the community to come in and help me, I don't know when we'll get them.
Got a good facility, apparently, but does need more helpers.
Evelyn is an excellent accountant for you, so I'm sure she has whatever money that was given to your account for that project still set aside.
I mean, you all keep that money for specifically for the brick?
Donna made money too, if you work out. Well, I mean, I knew I wasn't, but I, I just haven't been over there to see, and I, no, I can't sell it on myself.
Sound like, sound like she's invited to come down and help lay it in when you get ready.
I have to stand there, I have full wigs, so.
All right, entertaining motion to adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-five. We stand adjourned.